Please take your seats and thank you, sir. All right, call this evening is meeting to order. Appreciate everybody being here. We'll have a moment of silence followed by a pledge of allegiance. So if you would, please stand with me. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Amen. So before we start, we'll hold the, uh, our conduct roll call of the commissioners. Commissioner Demont Davis.
Present.
Commissioner Sana Gregory.
Present.
Commissioner Gail Hambrun.
Pray.
Commissioner Felicia Franklin Warner.
I'm present.
And Commissioner, I hope you don't mind me saying, but I ask everybody to keep you lifted up in prayer on the loss of your loved one. Madam. Yes, ma'am. Madam Clerk, that concludes the roll call. All commissioners present.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the September 1st Board of Commissioners Business meeting, our first order of business adoption of the agenda. Does anyone have any amendments?
All right, here and none. I entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I second it.
So Warner, was that Warner?
Commissioner Franklin Warner made the motion. Commissioner Davis seconded the motion. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed, it's unanimous.
Our first order of business is the veteran of the month.
All right. And because of the situation that we are in with COVID, we will only be reading the proclamations this afternoon. And our first, first item is veteran of the month. And this month, we are celebrating Mr. Larry W. Bussie. Larry W. Bussie is a native of Atlanta, Georgia, and a graduate of Luther Judas Prize High School in Atlanta. Reverend Bussie is also a graduate from University of New York in Albany, New York, with a bachelor of science degree in criminal justice and master's degree from the University of Phoenix in organizational management, presently taking classes in theology and religion. He is a member and associate minister at Jackson Memorial Baptist Church in Atlanta, under the leadership of Reverend Dr. Gregory A. Sutton, senior pastor. Reverend Bussie began his military career in May of 1970 in the United States Army, where he served in Vietnam as a military policeman, where he did two tours during the Vietnam conflict. He held the rank of staff sergeant, duty position as an operational sergeant, and platoon sergeant. Upon returning to the United States, he attended drill sergeant school and graduated as a military police drill sergeant. After his tour of duty as a drill sergeant, he was assigned the duty of a military police investigator in the criminal investigation division. His military awards include the Vietnam Service Medal, Vietnam Campaign Medal, two Army Accommodation Medals with oak leaf cluster, overseas service ribbons, two Army Achievement Medals with one oak leaf cluster, Army Good Conduct Medal, National Defense Ribbon, Professional Development Ribbon, Non-Commissioned Officers School Drill or Drill School Sergeant Badge, and Sergeant Morales Non-Commission Officer Award. Non-Commission Officer Academy, he also attended. General Douglas McArthur Distinguished Leadership Award and Meritorious Unit Citation awarded by President Richard Nixon. Reverend Bussie continued to serve his community and capacity as a law enforcement officer with the Atlanta Police Department and the Fulton County PD. He resides in unincorporated Jonesboro. He is married to Mae Bussie, father of five adult children, ten grandchildren and two great-grandchildren. He continues to serve his community as a member of the Clayton County Board of Zoning Appeals and holds the position of Vice Chair and serves as a volunteer chaplain with the Clayton County Sheriff's Department. His educational experience includes working with the Clayton County School System as an in-school suspension facilitator and later with Lincoln College of Technology as a criminal justice instructor. He became the criminal justice program chair and then was promoted to the evening supervisor, dean of students. At Mackey Brown College, he was the academic director of criminal justice under paralegal studies, associate dean of academic affairs, and later he became the campus president. Past organizations include Governor Task Force on Gains, past president, co-founder of the Georgia Association of School Resource Officers Incorporated, member of the University of Georgia Law Related Education Consortium, Athens, Georgia, member of the Phi Beta Sigma Fraternity, Inc., and Master Mason Samuel T. Daniels Lodge 109, Manheim, Germany. Georgia member of the Georgia Chapter of the National Organization of Black Law Enforcement Executives, recipient of Georgia Assembly House Representative House Resolution 2029, subject matter expert with Georgia Code Case Investigative Research Institute and a member of the Atlanta Chapter of Tuskegee Airmen Incorporated, and holds the position of First Vice President of the Chapter. He was a torchbearer for Lieutenant Colonel Charles Bussie Jr., a Tuskegee Airman with 332 flight command, who was his great uncle. Please, let's hear it for the very, very busy Mr. Larry W. Bussie, who is the veteran of the month. Yes, we can stand up for that. And I hope he's tuning in, because we definitely thank you for your service, sir. Like I said, you're a busy man.
Our next proclamation is September is National Senior Center Month.
All right, if we proceed on with the reading of the proclamation.
Clayton County observes September 2020 as National Senior Center Month, whereas the month of September is devoted to celebrating senior centers and their contribution to improving the quality of life for older adults. And whereas, in 1985, the National Institute of Senior Services was instrumental in achieving the first Senior Center Week Presidential Proclamation signed by President Ronald Reagan. In 2007, NISC designated the entire month of September as Senior Center Month to give centers greater flexibility in scheduling celebratory events. And whereas, this year's theme, Senior Centers: Delivering Vital Connections, Mind, Body, Spirit, and Community, focuses on how senior centers deliver vital connections to support older adults aging well. While delivery methods have changed during the pandemic, centers have succeeded in continuing to provide knowledge, programming, and other resources to residents of Clayton County. Whereas, the Frank Bailey Senior Center, J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center, Shellnut Intergenerational Center, Future Northeast Senior Center, Future Flint River Intergenerational Center act as catalysts for mobilizing the creativity, vitality, and commitment of the older residents of Clayton County. And whereas, through a wide array of services, programs, and activities, senior centers empower older adults to stay active and healthy, continue learning, share experiences, and to stay connected with friends and family. These activities reduce isolation and depression dramatically, improving the health and wellness of our seniors' lives. And whereas, the Frank Bailey Senior Center, J. Charlie Griswold Senior Center, Shellnut Intergenerational Center, Future Northeast Senior Center, and Future Flint River Intergenerational Center affirms the dignity, self-worth, and independence of our older citizens by facilitating their decisions and actions, recognizing their skills and knowledge, and enabling their continued contributions to our community. Now, therefore I, Jeffrey E. Turner, Chairman on behalf of the Clayton County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim September 2020 as National Senior Center Month in Clayton County, Georgia, and encourage all citizens to acknowledge the importance and special contributions of senior center participants and special efforts of the staff and volunteers who work every day to enhance the well-being of older adults of our community. And witness thereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause the seal of Clayton County, Georgia, to be affixed this first day of September in the year 2020.
All right, round of applause, please. I'll say it down and I'll continue to say it. We have the best seniors anywhere in the country, and therefore it's only fitting that we have the best senior staff as well as senior facilities to make sure that we celebrate them and provide them with only the best that we have to offer. So, thank you. Next.
September is National Kinship Care Month.
Clayton County observes September 2020 as Kinship Care Month, whereas Clayton County is steadfast in its commitment to promoting the safety and well-being of our children, and this includes providing a stable household for all youth in which they can be nurtured and succeed. And whereas, more than 195,000 children throughout the state of Georgia are raised in kinship care families with grandparent or relative caregivers who have stepped forward out of love and loyalty to care for their young relatives, providing them with a sense of connection, security, and ties to their cultural heritage, their family, and their community. And whereas, kinship families in Clayton County have a valuable resource in the Kinship Care Resource Center, which provides information, referrals, after-school, summer camp, tutoring, support groups, and a wide array of services, programs, and activities for grandparents and relative caregivers. And whereas, Kinship Care Month provides an opportunity to showcase the accomplishments of countless youth throughout Clayton County, who with the unconditional support of grandparents and other relatives, have successfully navigated the emotional difficulties of separation from their parents. Now, therefore, Clayton County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim September 2020 to be Kinship Care Month in Clayton County, Georgia, encourage all citizens to acknowledge the importance and special contributions of the grandparents and relative caregivers.
All right. Again, this is another great program that we have in Clayton County, where that program is a resource to grandparents who are actually having to take care of their grandchildren. And it's definitely a great organization and great call. So if you know anybody who is in need of a support base, introduce them to the Kinship Care Program Clayton County Senior Services Department. Thank you.
Next we'll have.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Next we'll have a presentation from MARTA.
Mr. Parker.
I'm sorry, I was in the obstructive view seat and couldn't see the agenda, so I apologize. I wasn't ready to spring into action. Good afternoon, and first I'd like to recognize some board members. Board Member Roberta Abdul Salam is here, and I want to thank her for her continued support of transit in the region, but particularly here in Clayton County. And I know both Jerry Griffin, one of the board members, from the other board member from Clayton County, and our board chair, Frida Hardidge, are listening online, so I appreciate their support as well. Want to go over several items. There's great news that there is a lot going on, so I will apologize now that this is a little bit longer presentation, but there's a lot to talk about. So we're going to talk about a few items. Advancing the More MARTA Capital Program, our amendments in bus shelter program update, some rider initiatives that we have underway, the work that we've made advancing our transit land use planning update, and final state of good repair update. Advancing the More MARTA Program, we were all, or many of us were all out on May 11th or July 11th with a ribbon cutting of Phase 1 of the Justice Center Transit Hub. It was a great event. It was one of the down payments that MARTA has committed to do under the 15th Amendment, and we're glad to have delivered on that. We are recognizing and working towards the final phase, Phase 2, of a more permanent Justice Center Transit Hub. And in between that, we're working hard to figure out the technical nuances and making sure that we can securely install a breeze machine so that our patrons are able to access the breeze machine. So that's something that I will be bringing back to you over the next couple of months with a clear plan on how we can get a breeze machine installed well in advance of that Phase 2, because I recognize that that is so important. The, we had a great event. Appreciate all of the commissioners who were in attendance and really want to thank you for your support. And MARTA was out there in force and really excited to lay out what we're doing for you. Another important item is our O&amp;M facility. We are progressing that and headed into real estate acquisition phase, which is very, very important. We've signed an agreement to advance the real estate acquisition, and that's really where we squarely are. So we finalized all the environmental processes. We've got a concept for a design and plan on having sometime in the fall, winter, the acquisition of the property, which is key to the, you know, the future designs. But we are on track to get this into construction by 2023. But there's a real important milestone that we got, and we had applied for a FTA discretionary grant, and we were awarded that grant, $13 million of additional funds from the FTA will be applied for this. So we're excited about that. And as I talked about, we have signed an MOU with Forest Park to help with the land acquisition, and our next step is, as I said, to complete that land acquisition. We've talked about this a lot since I've been coming out, and we continue to make great progress on our bus stop shelters and amenities program. I want to update you on where we are. I've had many people sort of worry that the funding challenges that we have and the pandemic issues that we're facing have slowed this program down. I want to report to you that although there are some impacts, it really is minor. We've committed to installing 37 bus stop amenities in 2020. We've got 30 of those done to date. We have five in permitting, two in design. We do have, you know, significant progress, and I'm excited to say that we're advancing this important project. And just to give an example, here's one of the stops at Tar Boulevard in Dixon, before and after. So the customers who are using this for three of our routes really have great access and can use our shelters in a way that is, we have about 79 weekday boardings at this stop, so we have a lot of people who are just in a better position to ride the bus. The BRT update, we, you know, we did, in the 15th Amendment, commit to having the corridors in place, beginning in place in 2016, and we have the planning underway in fiscal year 21, which has started for us, started July 1st, so we're working on the planning of that. Good news, and thank you to Commissioner Franklin Warner, who serves on the ATL, as we all know. The ATL Link has recommended this corridor as one of the ones for potential state bond funding. It scored very well on geographic equity scenario, and I believe the, that there's one more round of voting that the ATL Board will have in order to finalize what gets ultimately submitted to the state for potential bond funding, and we hope to be successful with that. So thank you for your leadership on that, Commissioner. The MARTA ridership initiatives that we have underway, one that's exciting to myself personally and a lot of us at MARTA, and we recognize that people who are unsheltered has become, is a major problem for this region, for our communities, and we recognize that we really need to work and deal with those who are unsheltered in our stations, on our vehicles, and our bus shelters. And we have started a partnership with Hope Atlanta. They're a really well-known organization. We will be serving our entire MARTA district, including Clayton County, with this partnership, but we've entered into a one-year pilot program that we look to be, hope to be very, very successful and hope to continue it, where we are partnering a non-sworn officer, part of our police security, our protective specialists, as we call them, with a social worker. They will be doing case management throughout the MARTA system, trying to find people who are unsheltered. We all recognize that being homeless is not a crime, and just applying police resources to that difficult situation isn't always the right, the right solution. So now having social workers with us clearly. The program is less than a month old, and we've already had some successes. In just the first two weeks of the program, we have found shelters for two individuals who are on our system and unsheltered. So we will continue to update you all about this important program. We've also mentioned this before. It was at the very beginning of our Rider Advisory Council has been stood up. We had 80 applicants. We selected 24 members. Four of them are from Clayton County and will, you know, they are riders, so they represent, you know, themselves, but they are from Clayton County. We're going to focus on a broad range of customer issues. We want to make sure that the voice of our customers is even stronger within our management team. We've had several meetings, and we're doing things like, for example, there's a meeting tomorrow night where we will be making sure that this group of 24 people understand MARTA finances, how we're budgeted, and helping to understand the inner workings of the organization. But the real things that we want them to focus on are elevator and escalator improvements, how we can do those better. We have an ongoing audiovisual information system, which we call Avis, that provides good information to our train and bus riders about arrival times. We're going to consider some renaming of stations that we want to run by them. And then when we eventually begin and finalize the design of our rail cars, we'll use them as a sounding board for some of the passenger amenities that will be inside our rail cars. So we're excited about this initiative. We've also made significant strides in masks on our system. Back in June, when we looked around, we were not that happy. We only saw about 35% of our customers wearing masks. We all know the politics that have gone on around masks in this state. I won't repeat those, but we recognize that we wanted our customers to wear masks, making sure that the customers and our employees are safe. We did a couple of things. We committed to distributing 2 million masks throughout the system to really raise awareness and make sure that people had access to the masks. We have installed masks. All of our buses now have masks on them. They are available in our stations. We are continuing to hand them out. We've handed out about 400,000 masks so far. I think that our ambition of handing out 2 million masks is not going to be delivered simply because we just have so many of our customers wearing masks. We're right about 90%. When I ride the system, it's very rare that I see someone. If you offer someone a mask, they readily take it. Most of our station personnel in the stations have access to these masks, so this is a great story. Another thing, and it's really something that you all have been successful with, and we're just glad to be a partner with you. As you know, on April 6th, the Georgia Smarts Community Grants was awarded to Clayton County. The grant will be used for smart pedestrian planning, and we're looking forward to working with the county to focus on promoting walkability and increase mobility equity, particularly around our transit facilities. So looking forward to supporting you on your endeavors to improve walkability around this great county. Transit land use planning update. Sometime in 2019, we began an initiative that I'm going to talk about, and it's beginning to create some benefits. And ultimately, what we want to make sure that we do is that when we invest in corridors, whether it's BRT or rail or whatever, we want to make sure that the zoning around the stations is done in a smart way that's going to attract ridership, that development's going to happen in a way that makes sense for the communities that these transit corridors are serving. I always like to make the analogy of lines and dots. If we think about our transit corridors, we always think about them as lines, but really the dots, those communities that we serve are ultimately what matters. And this is about making sure that we're fostering thoughtful planning efforts to make sure that TOD and the development can happen in a smart way around these stations. We, this is the timeline of where we are. We've had several workshops, and we will continue to have some workshops and some one-on-one meetings. Some public engagement is coming up in September and October, and we plan in the first quarter of 2021 to give a final presentation. This is sort of an overview of the activities that we're doing, but I think the best way to describe this effort is by example. But we're working with 10 jurisdictions in Clayton County to assist in developing policy and zoning to support transit initiatives. The 10 jurisdictions are College Park, East Point, Hayville, Forest Park, Jonesboro, Lake City, Lovejoy, Moreau, Riverdale, and unincorporated Clayton County. And like I said, we plan to wrap this up early next year. But I think really the way to think about this is, here's a dot, right? This is Mountain View. You're familiar with the area. It's, as you know, part of unincorporated Clayton County, and a, there was an overlay district was established in 2018, making it transit-ready. As part of this project, a parcel-by-parcel analysis was completed by the MARTA consultant. Mountain View scored extremely well because of land use policies that were adopted in 2018. And this station area becomes an easy way to identify, helps us to identify where we can potentially put future developments along this corridor to support transit. So this is a great example of where, excuse me, the work that was done ahead of time really supports what we're trying to do, and we want to make sure great opportunities like this exist throughout the county. Jacob Vallow is here, runs our TOD group, and if we have any questions at the end about this specifically, Jacob can absolutely give you more details about this. Our state of good repair program, want to give you a couple of updates on this. These aren't things that are, well, some of them are technically in Clayton County, but they are improvements that we're making that I think have an important impact on the citizens of Clayton County who ride the system. Obviously, Airport Station is a key station for us. We are beginning construction in the second half of 2020 to do a rehabilitation of this station. The Department of Aviation, City of Atlanta, relocated in September of 2020 so that we can install a second elevator here. Will match the canopy or make a similar canopy design to what the airport has already done along their system, and the construction will be estimated to be completed within two years. Another key rail station that interfaces with many of our transit riders from Clayton County is College Park. We have some of our busiest bus routes going in there. We're beginning a station rehabilitation here in 2021. We'll be looking at repaving the entire entranceway. We've got a lot of problems with failed pavers, landscaping, a lot of improvements to the fencing, and a whole variety of efforts. We have done some significant cleaning around the station, around our stations. This is one of them. If you're there, you will notice some really dramatic, particularly the concrete entranceways have been cleaned in a way that I don't think has been, hasn't looked as clean as it has in years and years and years. So we're excited about the improvements that we'll be making at College Park. We continue to advance our elevator/escalator rehabilitation program. Some highlights of this, it's a, you know, a program where we're trying to rehabilitate some very old escalators and elevators. Some of them are 40 years old. some very old escalators and elevators. Some of them are 40 years old. These are heavy, heavy-duty escalators. We are several years into this rehabilitation. Excuse me, we're about 39% done of all the elevators. 21% of the escalators are done, and we continue this. And we have probably about three or four more years of work to do. The bottom, two pictures there. We've put together some better information, improved the information to our customers when elevators are taken out of service so that people know how to navigate. If you are a wheelchair-bound person or have some mobility and need to, issues that you need to use an elevator, and you arrive at a station and the elevator is not working, whether it was planned or unplanned, we now have these flip signs, which will give people kind of customized options of what they can do to navigate the system if at particular elevators out of service. Last little update is we did close many of our restrooms because of COVID-19. Glad to report that we have decided to reopen these with enhanced cleaning. So the 17 stations that had previously been, had restrooms that were available to the public have been reopened. One of the things, and another important rail station to the community, the commuters from Clayton County is at East Point, will be one of the first smart restrooms that we're installing. The plan is late October that we'll begin construction of that. And that concludes my presentation. Excuse me, and I'd like to turn it back to you, Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker, for the presentation. Obviously, you have been real busy and appreciate all that you're doing. Are there any questions from Mr. Parker, from board members?
Good job.
Do you ask Mr. Chairman, how are you?
Doing well.
How are you, Mr. Parker? Can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
I hear you just fine.
Okay, I apologize. I'm going to get to space and conditions. First of all, Mr. Parker, you are amazing, and most detailed presentations with target dates, that's awesome. And I also want to thank you for that transit hub, because one of the things we do is always go back to see what we're accomplishing here in Clayton County, and to see that contribution after an email that I was able to trace back to 2016, it's phenomenal. So I'm looking forward to the continued development of that, and that is truly evident of clear community. And I want to say thank you to the Justice Center, everyone over there, including the previous DA, current DA, as well as the sheriff, and the Superior Court Judge, Joan Carter. I think it's important to make sure that we thank those who help move things along. The other thing I want to mention is I'm excited about the land use planning efforts surrounding the policy and zoning, and I'm looking forward to us continuing those conversations and working that space. I also want to make mention to you, and I'd like to have an offline conversation as soon as I take care of some personal matters. But I noticed on the smart pedestrian planning, there are great opportunities there. I'm hoping that we will look at 1941, as Mr. Chairman would confirm, and the other commissioners, I'm sure, would state that 1941, which touches over three districts, is one of our major concerns. And as recent as this past week, I had a meeting with Mr. Russell McMurray and some cohorts with ATL Transit Link Authority. And we were talking about making sure that the collection of data is partnered with the efforts of the ATL Transit Link, where they've got some initiatives that we'll be collecting data there as well. Russell McMurray stated that oftentimes, there are a lot of efforts going on that will get all benefit from those efforts in, you know, different capacity, whether it's MARTA or ATL or anybody else, to help us be able to hear those. And then one last thing I've got for you real quick is that due to COVID-19, we understand there's been some adjustments, but we've sent over information to your staff and wondering, well, one, how much of the routes have been reconstituted? And then if you can give us a timeline of the reconstitution of those routes? One round of question is the routes leading to the Justice Center hub, because a lot of our seniors are counting on that down in the corridor of District 3, which is a true bedroom community. A lot of seniors are needing to get to their doctor's appointment, and they're saying that there's a route or a couple of routes that may or may not have been reconstituted that are causing it more difficult to get to the Justice Center to get the ready to be. So that's really the question, and then of course, coordinating.
Okay.
And that's a lot.
We'll work to put something together around that. Just off the top of my head, we have brought back about seven or eight routes, and I would be just speaking from memory and might not get it right. But we'll get you some information about that particular and sort of where we stand and what the trigger points were at to put things back to normal or, you know, the new normal, whatever that looks like. So we'll reach out to you about that and share that with the rest of the commission.
That's wonderful. And then the other thing is just the smart pedestrian planning. To coordinate that with other efforts that you're collecting data, I figure it'll allow for us to all be even more successful in our efforts, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for your time. Y'all have a good one.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I just want to say to Mr. Flood, Mr. Parker, thank you for coming out with, when we spoke previously about the whole 1941 corridor and the absence of bitches and facilities for our citizens, I thank you all for really putting forth the effort and coming through like you said you would.
Yeah. Virgil's done a great job, particularly leading the bench program, and staff has done a great job in the overall amenities. So glad we can continue to serve that, and we've got our commitment that we've, we've got more work to do and what we're committed to do.
We understand, but you're always going to get flack for what you're not doing. I just want to thank you for what you are doing.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Yeah, and just as a side point to reemphasize Commissioner Franklin Warner's point, Tara Boulevard corridor is, we can use all the help we can get on that. So we're lucky and blessed to have you at the table to help along with that project.
You know, I'll reach out so I understand it better, and I will, you know, I talk to my colleague, Russell McMurray, quite a bit, and next time I talk to him, I'll make sure we talk about this corridor as well. I know they're doing a study on Tara Boulevard.
Right, right, right. And as everybody knows collectively, we're stronger. So let's make sure that all hands are on deck, and we are doing something to address this very serious problem of pedestrians. So thank you.
That is awesome. If I may just make one other quick suggestion, just a thought. If there's an opportunity for us to come together, Mr. Chairman, to announce a concerted effort between MARTA, maybe safe routes, and of course, GDOT, for us to show our commitment collectively as a board to make 1941 safer, that would be absolutely phenomenal. I think a lot of times, not only the efforts are happening, but just the packaging of those efforts and relating that to the public can oftentimes go a long way. And the reason I mention that is because in the previous meeting I had with Captain Zell, who's the regional person here, she said that there's some opportunities for us to even get the public educated on safety. And I think that there's an opportunity for us. That's all.
Yeah, and I appreciate you bringing that up. You'll be happy to know that the CEO, Ms. Stanford, is working on that. Of course, we need to have a larger discussion, but he is making an concerted effort to make sure we bring all the partners together to do just that, let everybody know what we're doing and how we're going to get it done. So appreciate your support.
You have our support.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, to the point of the concerns for the routes being fully reinstated, one of the routes that I know she's referring to is the 191, throughout Mr. Parker. And I wanted to offer that for the seniors that are having difficulty, we also have our mobility services available to them. The requirement is that they need to be, whether it's a quarter of a mile in a bus near a bus stop, but that's another option for them until everything is back, you know, to full force.
Right, right.
Thank you, board member. I think that we, I thank you so much for making that point. But I feel it's very important we understand that in District 3, we're a true bedroom community, and we have collected data that many of our residents do not need that requirement of the mileage that they need to be within in order to receive those services. So that was the other concern.
All right. Any other questions, statements, comments? Again, thank you and your staff for coming down, Mr. Parker.
Thank you for having me, and we're glad to be here.
Well, thank you, and have safe travels back.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
The board will now hear public comments. Citizens will be given three minutes maximum time to speak before the Board of Commissioners. Please state your name and county of residency for the record. Speak clearly into the microphone, and speakers should be courteous, respectful, and do not make any disparatory remarks or use abusive language when addressing the board.
Teresa Tally.
How you doing? My name is Teresa Tally. I live in Hampton, Georgia. I have many concerns. The first one is, we have contractors that started several jobs back in 2017. Is there a projected completion date, looking at Highway 54, Flint River Road, Monday's Mill, and now Tara Boulevard? Construction sites needs to be killed. Elected officials not utilizing the money and resources to beautify the county where all the dollar stores, liquor stores, tire shops, weeds, and payday loans look at the exterior. We have code enforcement and community development in place for about later. On 75 South, entering into Clayton County, unfinished highway landscaping design. Many abandoned buildings need attention. When entering into Clayton County, you see businesses, not homes. Start there with the cleanup. COVID-19 has caused many problems for homeowners and businesses with the loss of several jobs, unemployment benefits decreased, asking for deferments for multiple bills, struggling to pay the bills. Grocery bills has tripled due to virtual learning. Wanting to add trash to our property tax would increase our mortgage payments and escrow accounts. Some homeowners have walked away from their homes due to lack of money. We voted against this proposal years ago on the ballot, and now we must vote again, the public, not the commissioners. Our county representative should live in our county to be truly invested. There is nothing meaningful for this proposal, only for the trash company to get rich. Waste collection is not a function of government. Waste companies are privately-held businesses that are not contracted by the government. Private business fees should not be included in property tax. Now we are asking and pleading with the citizens to complete the sensor, and on the other hand, trying to force us to add trash to our taxes. It's clear that this panel is not for us. All we see and hear, how much more money can we get? Our tax dollars is not only for paying county salaries. Please start listening to our concerns, start focusing on all the unfinished projects.
Your time is up, Ms. Tally, but I will tell you, there has been no definitive decision made on mandatory trash pickup. We are coming up with options, the county staff, as well as the Solid Waste Management Authority Board. Matter of fact, we will have a presentation in, I think it's two or three weeks, during our work session, not the upcoming one, but the one after that. So I encourage you to either tune in or come and hear that presentation as well. We don't want to burden the citizens any more than they have to be, but there are certain things that need to be done to make sure that we are looking out for the overall best interests of Clayton County. But I do appreciate you sharing your concerns, which should be duly noted. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you. Also, can I just say congratulations to the Sheriff Department? Because they out-cutting grants, picking up debris. So I really appreciate Sheriff Hill for doing that for us.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
Miki Garber. Hold on a second. Go ahead, Commissioner.
I did get your information. Please forgive me. Assistant Chair has made him wear a hat. I didn't do my job, but of course, I tell you, like anybody says, when you come to your mama, that's it. So I do need to get back in contact with you. But in terms of liquor stores you talked about, in District 3, those stores are in City Lovejoy, not in District 3. We don't have any liquor stores in Clayton County. And the dollar shops, just remember, we have to moratorium the dollar stores. We're working through that. And one of the things I feel is important to get out to folks. You talked about the rise in cost of groceries, and I'm telling you, I got four kids, so I not only know it, but I feel it, and they eat a lot. So, but if you are a Clayton County student with a Clayton County ID, and I believe one of our commissioners can give you even more information about this, but you can sign up for assistance to receive food and additional assistance to get moved in your home. I urge every citizen of Clayton County to put their pride aside during this COVID-19 and take advantage of it. And I didn't mean to put you on Front Street, Commish, but, you know, I know the school system put that out, but y'all could definitely go to Clayton County Public Schools to find out about it. I just wanted to share that reason. But you have a blessed day, Ms. Tally, and I look forward to speaking with you as soon as I can, okay?
Yeah, and just to clarify a couple of points, every school, every student in Clayton County school system is being provided a lunch and breakfast, being delivered through our school bus system. And the second thing, when she mentioned no liquor stores in Clayton County, that's unincorporated Clayton County. So I just want to make sure that we made that clear. All right. Next one up is Miki Garber.
Mr. Chairman, may I remove my mask?
Yes, please.
Miki Garber, unincorporated Rex, Georgia. My concern today in Clayton County, with the mandatory halt on rents and mortgages being lifted, what steps are being taken to deal with the new wave of homelessness being taken since we are a service economy and many restaurants and businesses are being closed or lack of business due to the virus? The federal government is not sending checks to support those people in need. My father said of prayer, said prayer may not help, but prayers certainly can't hurt anything. My prayer today is I pray for the naked to be clothed, but we should pray harder for those that can clothe the naked. My prayer for the hungry, but for those that are hungry, but we should pray harder for those that cannot provide for themselves, and pray harder for those that can feed the hungry. I pray for the homeless, but we should pray harder for those who have the ability to shelter the homeless. This county is in a great, is about to experience a great tsunami of homelessness. And what steps are being taken to deal with this onslaught? With, with, with Commissioner discretion, I would hope that you would answer my prayers. Thank you very much. Are there any questions?
No questions, but I'll tell you this, through our CARES Act funding, we're trying to find ways how to help our citizens in that respect, in terms of evictions and so forth. But the one thing you got to remember is when resources run out, the people are going to be right back in the same boat unless they do something to help change their situation. So we also can try to help with education and other means of trying to get... So we also can try to help with education and other means of trying to get them in a position to be better off. But I don't want everybody to think that just because you throw a million dollars at however many people is out of work and impacted by the coronavirus. When that money runs out, more than likely, they could still be in the same position and will still be in a position in the county where we might have to look at homelessness. But our desire is that we do not, definitely don't increase the number of homelessness in Clayton County. But this board's desires to help as many people as we can with the resources that we have.
We'll pray for you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Orlando Gooden.
Orlando Gooden, unincorporated Clayton County. I watched the August 25th work session, and I listened carefully to the subject items number seven and number nine. Process and procedures for placing items on the agenda for the work sessions and a discussion on trash service. At last year's retreat, quality of life was priority number two. A sustainable plan to clean and keep the county clean. Is that universal trash pickup? The issues are method of pickup, billing and collections, and customer service. The questions, is it cost effective for citizens on a fixed income and does it increase efficiency? How does it affect homeowners paying into an escrow account and then increasing their mortgage? An ordinance or law that gives the county the authority to enforce mandatory trash collection on landlords? If it is on a referendum, it must be detailed, not just, quote, "Do you support universal trash pickup?" unquote. The devil is in the details. You might just create a monopoly. Last year, I requested from my commissioner trash cans at Iron Gate and Tara Boulevards. All I got was two signs and more trash. At the August 18th Commissioners Meeting, Kashina Ori complained about the runaround she got when she wanted some street trash, mattresses, and furnitures picked up. That's not covered under universal trash pickup. As she finished, Commissioner Hambrick said, "Oh, I know who she is. Then why does she have to come here to resolve her problem?" Commissioner Gregory said, "One of her constituents pays $100 a year." Is she going to accept universal trash pickup? On average, most pay $240 per year. Also, there are 100,000 parcels in unincorporated Clayton County. If 12% don't have a homestead exemption, then 88% would be penalized. The needs of the many should always outweigh the needs of the few. Universal trash pickup is a lofty goal with some high hurdles to overcome. It cannot be accomplished with possibility, or it may or may not work. The foundation should not be based on a belief, supposition, conjecture, or speculation. From your retreat report, it reads Clayton County Strategic Operation Plan, quote, "Making less political decisions and more evidence-based decisions." Where's the evidence this is going to work? Why should you have an election, a special election in March instead of a general election in November 2021? So this way, everybody will be aware.
Thank you. Yeah, and I'll just add on your last comments that, again, nothing has been set in stone. We have not finalized if our referendums take place, whether it's going to be March or November. Again, we're talking through it.
Waste management, and you made mention of that. One of the things that you said that was fascinating, that I don't think was taken into consideration, two years ago, when they had this come up, I was at Battle Creek, and I heard the questions that you were asked. If people are aware of what it involves, they may not be so willing to just check off on a ballot, "Are you in support of..." See, that's why I said it has to be detailed. Take into consideration everything that's involved. And I'll be honest with you, you can institute universal trash pickup, that may not resolve the problem. That's why I said it can't be based on a, it may or may not work. You're affecting people's incomes and freedom of choice. If I don't like, and I saw this at the Solid Waste thing, if I don't like what you're doing, who am I going to call? Thank you.
Thank you. Timothy Von Dell Jefferson.
Timothy Von Dell Jefferson, unincorporated Clayton County, Hampton, Georgia. First, I'd like to send my sincere condolences to the Franklin family. And also, I'd like to send my sincere condolences to Mr. Ryan Ringer's family, who transitioned this morning. So, as we work through this pandemic, we are losing a lot of our loved ones. But what I want to converse about today is the IGA agreement with the Development Authority. I think that I have done a lot of due diligence on the fact of economic development and the lack thereof, and the lack of revenue generators that are established in the county. Now, in my opinion, that IGA agreement was fraudulently done with a little bit of questionable corruption. That's just my opinion. Now, we have conversed about this issue for the last year. And I'm deeply concerned about it because I look back 10 years ago, and I ask myself one simple question. What benefit in its current status has the Development Authority done for the county? I haven't seen not one signature project. I have seen approximately close to $400,000 being misused and misappropriated on prestigious plans, employees. We're bringing some of the best minds, and yet, they produce nothing. So now you all have an Economic Development Director over the Development Authority, and you have posted a job for Economic Development Officer. In my opinion, too, my personal opinion, and other people's professional opinion, in order to maximize the best talent out of the talent pool that we hire, I think that Economic Development Director and Economic Development Office need to be under the leadership of the BOC. Because after all, we elect you guys, we don't elect these people. Y'all appoint these people, and yet, they are ineffective in what they do. And in the meantime, the county is not moving forward in the spirit of excellence that it needs to be moving forward. So while we keep tabling this issue, we got to make a tough decision on which way we're going to go. Are we going to cancel the IGA, which was fraudulently done, and emphasize moving this county forward in the spirit of excellence, economic development, bringing those employees back under the control of the BOC? Thank you so much.
Thank you. Rob Leatherwood.
Evening, Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Commissioners, Rob Leatherwood, Clayton County. So as we can see, there's some pushback about the mandatory trash pickup. So I'd like to highlight a few things. It was mentioned during the work session for the trash pickup that we need to limit the number of trash trucks on the roads. But I got to tell you, the real problem with road damage is from all the trucks that are accessing the warehouses that keep getting approved. I can't tell you how many times I've seen those large trucks on roads that they're not supposed to be on as they try to turn around and navigate back to the warehouse. It also came up, we need to educate our residents about trash, so that's why we need mandatory trash service. But let's remember, that's why we started Keep Clayton County Beautiful. The backbone of it is education, education, and more education. But why are we in this situation to start with? And I think it boils down to a couple of things. One of the greatest tragedies in our county was when the Board of Commissioners voted to remove Keep Clayton County Beautiful, funding that is, back in 2010. We could thank Commissioners Gregory and Hambrick for participating in that, and we lost 10 years of progress in education by not having it. Those same commissioners also voted to prevent Keep Clayton County Beautiful from coming back in 2018, with Commissioner Hambrick being the most outspoken against it. But we finally got it approved and implemented it, and we're still in the setup affiliation process this year, and I look forward to what it will bring. Another shot in our foot as a county was in 2016 when the Board of Commissioners approved the highest landfill rates in the metro Atlanta area. That literally created a pattern of illegal dumping and forced away responsible residents and businesses who couldn't afford the higher rates. I've said it before, I take one bag to Lovejoy, it costs me $40. I take the same bag to the Fayetteville Transfer Station, $1. That's why we need a transfer station in Clayton County where currently the county doesn't have one. Again, this board and other people like to compare us to Gwinnett County, which is nice, especially when looking at the trash pickup. But did you know that Gwinnett started Gwinnett Cleaning Beautiful back in 1980 and didn't implement mandatory trash pickup until after the year 2000? So we're going about this backwards. Maybe if we didn't lose 10 years without Keep Clayton County Beautiful, then all these talking points would be easier to contemplate. It's just hard for people to accept solutions from certain commissioners when they have been solely responsible for creating the problems that we're now facing. I would say, as commissioners, let's get the county's house in order with Keep Clayton County Beautiful, with the transfer stations, with the landfill, before we tell residents how to operate their house and their trash. We need to lead by example. Even if you want citizens to vote, as it was mentioned, it needs to be on a November election ballot, not on a March special election or a May primary, because we need the feedback of the majority of residents in Clayton County. Again, thank you for your time, and have a blessed evening.
Thank you. Looks like Claudia Lucy. Ms. Claudia Lucy. All right, Madam Clerk, that concludes public comment.
Now, the board will entertain the consent agenda items.
All right, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda? I'll make, Commissioner Davis made the motion. I'll second the motion. Are there any questions on any of the items? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye. Aye opposed. It's unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, the next item of board appointments.
All right, next up is board appointments. The first board appointment is for the Code Enforcement Board. This appointment is to fill the alternate member of the Code Enforcement Board helped by Sylvia Shellnut. This is to replace her. She is deceased. Are there, and this is a holdover from last meeting. Any recommendations? Any recommendations? All right, continue to hold that till next meeting, Madam Clerk. Next board appointment is to Tourism Authority Board to replace Jenna McCones, who resigned. The new term will begin immediately and will expire on September 1st, 2022. This is Commissioner Hambrick's selection. You have a recommendation?
Yes, Mrs. Chair, I would like to nominate Ms. Iowa Chapman.
All right, is there a second? I'll make the second. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next board appointment is Mental Health Community Board for Ms. Alika Anderson. The new term will begin September 17th, 2020. It will expire September 16th, 2023. Commissioner Gregory's selection. Do you have a recommendation?
Yes, sir. I did speak to Dr. Anderson, and she is willing and wants to continue serving in that capacity. I put that forward for motion, please.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Second?
Properly seconded by Commissioner Davis. Any questions? Hearing none. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next board appointment is Mental Health. The appointment of Martin Thompson to the Mental Health Community Board will expire October 7th, 2020. The new appointment will begin October 1st, 2020. It will expire October 7th, 2023. This is an at-large appointment. Are any recommendations? I spoke to Mr. Martin Thompson. He would like to remain on the board. Offer that as a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Properly moved to second. Any questions? Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Next board appointment is also to the Mental Health Board for Eric Bell. His seat will expire on October 7th, 2020. New appointment will begin on October 7th. I'm sorry, October 1st, 2020, and will expire October 7th of 2023. Any recommendations? This is also at-large.
Mr. Chair, it is my understanding that I sent over notices to the clerk that even though Mr. Bell represented District 3, that we already have a District 3 representative on the floor, and so that, I believe, goes for another commissioner based upon our previous, I guess, vote. I'm sorry, drawl. It was based upon our new order of assigning positions.
Yes, that's what makes it at-large. This is more than a five-member board, so anything, any spillover from additional members would be at-large.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do, I understand. Thank you.
All right, Madam Clerk, hold that till next time, unless somebody has a recommendation. Hearing none. All right, next board appointment is Mental Health Board for Mr. Brian Flowers. His appointment will expire October 7th, 2020. New term will start October 7th, 2020, and will expire October 7th, 2023. This is also an at-large appointment. Spoke to Mr. Flowers, and he's not interested in serving again, so are there any recommendations? All right, hearing none. Hold that till the next meeting as well. And that concludes our board appointments for this evening. Mr. Reed, is there a need for an executive session?
Evening, Mr. Chair. Yes, there is one for real estate and litigation.
All right, is there a motion for executive session for real estate and litigation? I'll make that motion.
There.
Commissioner Franklin Warner made the motion. I'll second the motion. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It's unanimous. Everybody have a good day, and God bless. Continue to be safe, and continue to encourage everybody to fill out the census. Let's get our numbers up. All right, motion to reconvene.
So moved.
I'll second. Those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed. It is unanimous. Motion to adjourn. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, those in favor, aye. Opposed. It's unanimous. Good night.